Welcome. My name is Jeff Badnok. I've been asked by the Parking Commission to help facilitate the meeting tonight. This meeting is an informational meeting about the proposed increase in parking fines downtown. The meeting has been scheduled to go from 7:00 to 9:00. I don't know if we'll have to go that long, but we're certainly scheduled to go that long and will go as long as we can, at least until 9:00. Tonight's meeting is technically a meeting of the Missoula Parking Commission because the commissioners are all assembled. They have no item for business tonight except this information sharing meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to act as a follow-up to a meeting that was held earlier, a presentation that was made to the Missoula Downtown Association, a kind of a question and answer forum. We're going to repeat that tonight. The questions that were asked and answered at that forum are going to be asked again tonight by me and answered by the Parking Commission Board or the Parking Services Director. And then following that, we'll have an opportunity for members of the audience to ask questions and I'll review the technical aspects of that in a few minutes. I want to acknowledge that the Parking Commission Board Directors are volunteers. They, like you, are giving their time on this rare sunny Wednesday evening to be here to deal with this very important issue. In my 20-plus years of working downtown, I learned several very important lessons. And I've always recounted that the most important lesson I learned is that people of goodwill can disagree. That it's possible that people who have the best interests of downtown or any issue can There's no one here tonight, and I know many of you and I've worked with many of you over the years, no one here tonight is here motivated out of ill-will. Everyone, I think, here is interested and interested in what's best for downtown Missoula. Let's not forget that. And I want everyone to please promise yourselves that you will conduct yourselves tonight as the kind of person you want your kids to believe you are. And that is people who are passionate, yet respectful, and civil, and willing to listen and to communicate with one another. The program tonight, I will hand off the program right now to Tom Wilkins, who is the Chair of the Parking Commission. He has some remarks and has to open the meeting for the Parking Commission. And then he'll hand it off to Parking Services Director and Guest for comments. And then I will take over again and ask a series of questions. Hopefully, they will answer some of your questions and maybe make the evening shorter. But we'll get the answers to those questions and then I will ask anyone who has a question to please come up at this table and use the microphone. You have to push the button or I'll help you push the button to get the green light on. We want to make sure that your questions are heard by everyone and that they are a matter of record. This meeting is being recorded by MCAT and will be cable cast at a later date. I don't know if we're going out live now, but we certainly will have this out cable cast for the community. So without further ado, Tom Wilkins, Chair of the Parking Commission.
Can you hear me? This is new to me. I got a green light, so I guess you can. I'm Tom Wilkins. I'm Chairman of the Parking Commission. I wanted to, I realize this is a very difficult subject for us to approach, and I wanted to give you a little bit of background about myself. I've started living in Missoula in '64. The last 38 years, I've been actively involved in the downtown community as a business owner or as an employee of a business. I still have interest in this downtown area that would be adversely affected if the downtown area was hurt. So I certainly want to see personally a very successful downtown Missoula. Secondly, I want to thank Jeff for being our narrator here and helping us out on this to kind of smooth out any ripples that we might have. I appreciate that very much. Thirdly, this is the second time this issue has come up in the last seven years. I was brand-new to the Board 10 years ago, or very young, I guess I should say, when it came up in '98, was it? And we did a lot of soul-searching at that time and the Board at that time voted 5 to 4 in favor of raising the fines. The Downtown Association at that point decided that this was not a good idea, as did the City Council, and it was voted down, which is fine. We recognize that. Our Board is trying to look at the future of downtown Missoula and the future of parking needs. And we were trying to create more parking. And we feel that our fine structures are not conducive to creating more parking. Hence, we are bringing this subject back up again. This time, the Board has voted on suggesting raising the fees and the vote was unanimous. So in the two votes, out of counting myself only once, nine Board members. The vote right now is 8 to 1. I just want to point that out, that the Board has studied this the last two boards. And we feel very strongly that this issue should be addressed and we do need to raise fines, that it would be a positive thing for the downtown. Moving on from there, I want to have our Board members identify themselves. Why don't we start over here with John? Press the little button.
I'm John Smith. I'm a local attorney and I've been on the Commission for six years? Close, something like that, six years.
And I'm Carol Williams. I'm the Administrator at Warden Thane here in Missoula. I've been on the Board, I believe, four years.
Rod Austin, I manage a branch for Sterling Savings Bank. I've been on the Commission just a couple of months.
Cindy, go ahead.
I'm Cynthia Winchell and I have been a Parking Officer for 18 and 1/2 years. Thank you very much.
We've all probably heard from her. At this point, I'm going to turn the meeting, well, okay, do we need to officially open because this is an official meeting? I will call the meeting to order. And with that, I want to turn over the microphone to Ann Guest, who is the Executive of the Parking Commission. And I want to assure all of you that Ann enjoys the wholehearted support of the entire Board. Ann?
Thank you, Tom. First of all, I too would like to welcome you to our public meeting and sincerely thank you for your interest and taking your time this evening to come and learn more about parking. Our fine proposal is extremely important and I appreciate your interest in learning more about it. If nothing else, the Parking Commission putting forth this fines proposal has been a great opportunity for lots of discussion and education. So if nothing else has been made of this, at least we've had an opportunity to learn a lot more about parking and the parking program. I bet you never thought that parking was so complex. Well, now you know. I'd like to set the stage a little by stating a few facts and making a few short comments. It'll take approximately 10 minutes. So if you would bear with me and follow me through and then we'll get to the questions. I'm sure everyone in this room would agree with me that Missoula's downtown is extremely vibrant and successful. And that's thanks to all of you who have worked hard and have contributed to this fact, including property owners, business owners, retailers, employees, people who live downtown, and those who come downtown to enjoy what the downtown has to offer. This is your downtown. And actually, it is all of our downtown and the Parking Commission wants to make sure that we help create the best possible place this town town can be. And we can continue this success by working together and making a positive perspective while keeping in mind the overall picture of the downtown and its future. I believe everyone understands and wants this to be the case, even if we come from different sides of this issue. We are incredibly fortunate to have a Parking Commission like we have that has effectively managed the parking in downtown since 1971. That's 36 years. Parking is our business and we have done an extremely good job of it. The Parking Commission has a key role to play here and now in the next generation of our downtown. We have to take a lead in providing a progressive parking program in addition to the next generation of parking facilities. Without our leadership, the downtown will be challenged. And I assure you, the Parking Commission is here to secure a positive future for Missoula's downtown. We have worked hard with the MDA in the past and we will continue to work hard with them in the future. It's a symbiotic relationship that I think needs to be recognized and honored. In looking at our downtown, one of our biggest assets is our on-street parking. We are very fortunate to have very wide streets that afford us high-density angle parking. This is truly unique for a town our size. Unfortunately, there's a limit to the supply, which means that each and every space is very precious. And I mean very precious. In fact, each space represents $250 worth of retail sales per day for the downtown. Think of that. We have about 1,100 meters. That represents a huge amount of retail sales. Consequently, we need to respect that on-street parking. We need to manage it well and we need to ensure that it does what it's supposed to do. So what is this on-street parking supposed to do? Its function is to provide availability and turnover of the parking. We do this with meters, enforcement, and fines. When these tools work together, there are parking spaces available for all of our customers to come down and park at a very reasonable and affordable rate. Right now, these tools are not working effectively together and there's a problem. And what's the problem? The problem centers around people who don't respect this on-street asset that we have and abuse it. They park at the meters, they don't plug the meters, and move from one spot to another all day long. They get meter violations, lots of them. But at only $2 a violation, they can collect them all day long and still feel like they've gotten away with cheap cost of parking. The bottom line is that the $2 is no longer a disincentive. It is no longer a deterrent to this behavior. In fact, it encourages it. It encourages game-playing. Again, it's important for everyone to understand that we are talking about the consequences of not plugging the meter. We're not talking about the cost of parking. So what's the solution to this problem? The Parking Commission has explored many solutions. We've started by offering a lot of incentives. We've offered affordable parking at 25 cents an hour in the off-street structures to 50 cents on the street. That's incredibly inexpensive parking. We offer alternatives to the employees and the employers. We offer off-street monthly leases, 10-hour meters, the EZ Pass program, the Lewis &amp; Clark Park &amp; Ride, and many more. And I'll talk about each one of those in more detail later. However, these incentives don't outweigh the convenience to simply park on the street and get tickets. There's no other way to stop the abuse, thus the problem. The Parking Commission Board of Directors looked at the abuse and has proposed an increase in the fines to act as a deterrent. Again, the Parking Commission is not increasing the cost to park downtown. In fact, we welcome customers downtown by our cheap parking. If the Parking Commission didn't address this problem right now, we would be irresponsible. We would not be doing what we're supposed to be doing. We understand the concern about the customers and the perception about the tickets and not being fair. But all we're doing is simply asking those customers to come down, park very inexpensively, comply with our regulations, which means plug the meters and they won't get a ticket. Then they will have more available parking and thus a better experience in downtown. We simply ask customers to respect this on-street asset that we have and plug the meters. It is their choice. If they don't, they'll get a fine, an amount that will discourage them from abusing the privilege. The proposed fine structure will ensure availability and turnover and keep people from abusing the meters. And the result will be open parking for the downtown. So now, you know what the problem is, why the Commission is proposing what we are, and why. It's an important step and the Parking Commission feels like this is the right thing to do, it is the right time to do it, for the right reason. What I'd like to do is bring your attention to the handout that I had at the table outside the room. Has everyone had a chance to look at it or have it in your hand? Could somebody go grab some and we can pass them around? Before I review the handout, I'd like to go over the definition of some of the terms that you're going to hear a lot about tonight. I'm certain most of you understand them, but what I'd like to do is just make sure you understand them directly. What is a meter violation? A meter violation is when a vehicle is parked at a meter without engaging the meter, without plugging money into the meter. There's a red flag and that person has not paid for the privilege to park at that space. Thus, they'll get a ticket. Right now, that meter violation ticket is $2. An overtime violation? Most of the parking meters in downtown Missoula are 2 hours. This allows plenty of time for people to shop in a 2-hour period. If they stay at a meter for longer than 2 hours, this is called an overtime violation. So it means that the vehicle must move after they've been there 2 hours. The way we know this is by the officers chalking the tires. They chalk the tire, they note the time that they chalk it. If they come back after 2 hours and that vehicle is still there, they will incur an overtime violation. And right now, that overtime violation is $5. Our next violation is an improper parking violation. And these are safety-oriented violations. They are yellow-zone violations, wrong direction, loading zone, blocking a sidewalk, blocking a driveway, permit parking, et cetera. These are currently $15. So those are the three general categories of violations. So if you look at the handout that I've given you, you'll see that our proposal is at top. The current fine structure begins with a first meter violation of $2. If that vehicle gets a second ticket during the day, in the past, it's been able to go up to $5. At the end of the day, that's wiped clean. Then every subsequent meter violations would be $5. The same approach has been for the overtime violation. The first violation was $5. If that vehicle was caught having an overtime violation again on the same day, it would go to $10. Then the improper parking is $15. There was a reason that this escalated fines structure was adopted 9 years ago. We had a computer program that was personally customized for the Parking Commission that eventually fell apart about 2 years ago. We went through an elaborate process. We got a new ticket management program that does not allow us to do that escalation. So because of that, the Parking Commission has put forward a proposal to make it very simple. Simple for the public to understand, simple for the parking officers, and simple for us to manage all the fines. We're proposing that that $2 go to a $5. Any subsequent meter violation throughout the day, and there can be several, would all be $5, which is the same as what the second violation was in the old system. The overtime violation, we're proposing to go to $10. Again, that is the same as what the second one was before. The improper parking to go to 10. So the proposed fine structure doesn't vary greatly from the previous, from the current program, except for in the initial fine from the $2 to $5. It's complicated?
You said 10.
Oh, I meant, okay, excuse me, improper parking from 15 to 20. If you go to the next chart, you'll see that I've compared Missoula's parking fines to the other cities in the state of Montana. You'll see that Bozeman and Butte have NA. The reason for that is that they do not have on-street meters. Bozeman has never had them and Butte had them and took them out. And then the rest of the cities have them. And that's what their fines are, just for you to compare to. Then I chose 7 cities in the Rocky Mountain area that are cities that are under $100,000 that have parking commissions with the same kind of revenue as our parking commission. I think you'll all agree that you can't compare the cities or the parking commissions in the other Montana towns to ours. We're light-years ahead of them and I'm proud of that. But to compare us to those cities is really not quite apples-to-apples. I think it's more realistic to compare us to other cities that have the success that our downtown has. You can see there the comparison for the meter violation, for the overtime, and for the improper parking. Then, if you turn that page over, I simply have put together facts about parking. I gave you our mission statement. So, you know, we can show that we are in fact following our mission statement by managing on-street parking. And one of the tools of managing on-street parking is enforcement and fines. The purpose of the meters, I talk about the definition of the violations and I've given you, excuse me, a few facts and a little bit of history there. So I welcome you to read through that and if it brings up any questions, you'll have a chance to ask those questions later on in the program. So that's the end of my welcoming remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. I've been provided with a list of 10 questions about the parking issue and I will ask them of the Parking Commission as a group and whoever they choose to answer can answer. I don't know who's best suited to answer the questions. I believe they do.
Excuse me. Who made the questions up there?
These were provided by the Parking Commission. And this is, these are the same questions that were asked before the Downtown Association Executive Board meeting some time ago. Same, same.
.................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. I happened to start overhearing the conversation, so I interrupted, and I said, "Tell me, where do you work?" She mentioned, "Across the street." "What are your hours?" She gave me her hours. I said, "Why are you parking on the street? You've got a parking structure across the street with parking costs half that rate as on the street. Why aren't you parking in the structure?" And she said, quote, "It's easier for me to park on the street and get $2 tickets because it's less expensive than paying for the cost of parking anywhere else." Bingo. I thought, "That is exactly what's going on." So that's my answer to the first question. Would anybody else like to add anything to it? Cindy?
Well, I can, I can definitely testify to the fact of, I can't tell you how many times I've had people come up to me and go, "Oh, just give me the ticket." You know, it's a heck of a deal. "I'm not going to put any money in the meter. Just give me the ticket." You know, and it's like, "Okay, there's something wrong with this." You know, if people don't even care, you know, it makes me feel like, whatever my efforts are, I mean, immediately, it doesn't matter. We get the same people over and over and over again. We have 10-hour meters two blocks away, you know, and nobody's utilizing them. Makes it really hard.
Thank you. Now, the second question may just follow on to that same issue, but the question is, who are the abusers? You mentioned employees and downtown business people. Who are these abusers?
They are just that, the employees and the employers, finding convenient parking right on the street, and also leaseholders. And let me explain that. We have 13 off-street lots. People pay monthly amounts to park in these off-street lots. You know, down in the Riverfront Quarter, we have a number of them. We have them scattered all throughout the downtown. We have leaseholders who have businesses, and they come to their offices, and it's human nature, they park out in front of the meter, "Oh, I'm just going to run in for a second and check my email." They get in there, it takes longer than they think, and they think, "Oh, well, so what? If I get a ticket, it's just $2." What's happening is that this individual is taking up two spaces now. They're taking up a very precious space as a monthly leasing, and they're also taking up your customer spaces on-street. And so, they're taking two spaces. This is a really difficult situation to handle. I wish we could ticket them, because they should be forced to get back down to their leased spot, but they have a right to park there if they are okay with getting tickets and they want to pay for a monthly lease. The fact is that 60% of our tickets written are for meter violations. We write over 43,000 meter violations a year. That's a lot. 50% of those are the $2 violators that are employees, employers, and the leases. The abusers simply wait, oftentimes, to get our monthly notice, and they treat our monthly notice as they do a utility bill. They get it in, and that's simply the cost of parking. They just acquire $2 tickets, and hey, in the end, it doesn't matter. This is just like a monthly bill for them.
Okay, the third question is, how will the fines proposed create parking availability and turnover for the customers?
I truly believe that if the fine goes to $5, it will curtail the abuse by these people sitting at the meters and taking those valuable spots away from the customers. I think that $5 is enough a deterrent that they won't be trying to take advantage of that anymore. The incentives have proven already not to work. So what we have to do is look at that carrot-and-stick approach, and this is one of the sticks.
Okay, that begs the question, if that's the sticks, what are the carrots? What incentives does the parking commission provide to keep employees and business owners from parking on the streets?
I've referred to some of these earlier, but I'll go into more detail now. We have 13 off-street lots where people can come and get a leased space, and two parking structures. Currently, we have 60 monthly leased spaces available for employees to utilize. They're $30 a month. That's pretty darn cheap parking, but we've got that many available that aren't being utilized. We have 10-hour meters. We have 150 of them in the periphery of the downtown, where it's not interfacing with the more commercial use and need. If you plug a 10-hour meter, it's basically a dollar a day. A typical month is about a 20- to 21-day work month. That's $20 a month. So they've got $30 a month for a leased parking space, or $20 a month to park at a 10-hour meter. Both very affordable. The parking commission sponsors the Easy Pass program with the Downtown Association and Mountain Line. We provide free bus passes to every single employee whose business is an MDA member. So every employee can have a bus pass. Currently, we're, the Mountain Line has reported that they are doing 2,400 rides per month on an average. That's significant, but it's still underutilized. We also have participated in developing the Lewis &amp; Clark Park-and-Ride down at the Dormblazer Field. There are 100 spaces dedicated for downtown employees. They can come, park free, get a free shuttle with only 15-minute headways down to the downtown. Again, they park free, have free shuttle. The 100 spaces, probably only eight of them are used on a daily basis. We've advertised, Missoula Motion has advertised, Mountain Line has advertised, and the employees aren't making that choice. These are incentives, these are very affordable incentives. We also help sponsor or provide the matching funds for the Missoura Valley Transportation Management Association, which is Mr. TMA. They're the ones that provide van pools. Currently, they're running 11 full 15-passenger vans into the Bedderut, to the downtown, and back again. That's another opportunity for an employee to take advantage of that's being sponsored by the parking commission. The parking commission also provides the matching monies for Missoula Motion. Again, their mission is to promote alternative transportation. They work with employers. They go and do onsite visits and help them with incentives, so that the employer will work with their employees to make better choices than parking on the street or driving their vehicles into the downtown. As you know, these incentives are not working, obviously, because the employers are sitting on the streets. Oftentimes, these incentives work best when there is a disincentive like a fine, but when the disincentive is no longer a deterrent, then the incentives are very effective either.
Would more enforcement, more meter violation, more tickets being written, would that produce the same result as raising the fines?
I don't believe it would, because in our current system, a person, even if the officers could get around their two-hour route three times a day, that would be a total of only $6 in meter violations. That is still cheaper than what's in the parking structure and the cost of parking there. So again, there's no incentive for them to make better choices. Right now, the officers are spinning their wheels, writing a bazillion $2 tickets. If the fine were $5, I believe that they wouldn't be writing so many tickets. They would write fewer $5 tickets, and then that would free up their time so that they could get back around again and be more effective and deal with their routes more completely, rather than spinning their wheels writing all these $2 tickets. Cindy, do you want to make any comment about that?
Was your mic on for that? Would you restate it for the record?
Excuse me, I totally agree with that.
Thank you. Here's a question I'm sure a lot of people are interested in. Would the fines proposal result in an increase in revenue for the parking commission?
Yes, but not in the way you think. First of all, we're talking about changing behavior. Our interest isn't just to raise revenue. So when we change behavior, I firmly believe that if the fine were going to $5, what we're going to see is that fewer tickets will be written, so our parking ticket revenue will go down. That's what we in the Parking Commission Board would like to see. We would like to see us write fewer tickets. Because we're going to be writing fewer tickets, I think the change in behavior will cause people then to plug the meters. Thus, the meter revenue will increase. How do I evaluate that? That's difficult. I'm just saying, I believe that that's going to be what the change in behavior will produce. Maybe the offset of reducing the parking fine revenue and increasing the meter revenue might be a wash. So if you look at the bottom of your handout that I gave you, I've taken the number of meter violations and overtime violations and improper parking. I took the number of those that were issued in fiscal year '06. The next column is taking the revenue that we would have gotten under the current system, minus what we could be getting in the new system, taking that and taking a 70% collection rate, which is our current collection rate, which, by the way, is well above the national average, and I am then saying, "This is the revenue that we could get with changing this behavior." I'm estimating about $180,000 worth of increased revenue as a result of the new proposed fine structure.
I've got some members of the city council here who wrestle every year with revenues and expenses, and I know they're very sensitive to this next question. If you get more revenue, how will that revenue be utilized?
Back in May of 2003, the Missoura Redevelopment Agency came to the parking commission and told us about an exciting new development that they were embarking upon, which is the Riverfront Triangle. I'm sure all of you are well aware of it. They asked for the parking commission to commit to our participation in building the parking inventory related to the development of that property. The parking commission said, "Yes, you bet. We feel that this is a great location. It's a gateway into the downtown from the west, and we would like the opportunity to build more parking inventory for the downtown." As you know, after the last four years, really, nothing has landed on that site to be developed yet, though the parking commission still made that commitment. Then, in July of '05, we were approached to support the Market Square project. We didn't know how that was going to look in the future. It was still not well-defined, but the parking commission said, "Yes, we'll think outside the box. If this means, you know, more activity for Missoula and we can build some parking, that would be great." Then things started to escalate. About a year ago, in May of '06, First Interstate Bank approached the parking commission and talked to us about an exciting project where they wanted to raise the bank that exists at their footprint right now and build a six-to-nine-story office building. With that was going to come increased demand. They wanted to be able to have a parking structure that would deal with that demand, and then if the parking commission could come and partner with that in a public-private partnership, and then we would build approximately 100 new parking spaces by decking over Riverside Lot, which is down by the fish. That would be an exciting opportunity for the parking commission to take advantage of to build increased revenue, inventory for the downtown. That's another project where we could take this added increase in revenue and put it toward that. With $180,000, that would grant the parking commission an additional $2 million worth of revenue bonding capacity to build that kind of additional inventory. Without having a strong revenue stream, we would not be able to do that. So here's a fines proposal that will deal with abuse right now. It will manage and respect that on-street parking, at the same time, ensure and build the possibility that we can build additional inventory in the future. Two more projects have come to our attention just in the last several months. One is the police headquarters for the Missoula City Police Department. They need a new facility. With that comes parking. They need public parking. They want the parking commission to participate in that. We would love to participate in that, because we feel it's very, very important to keep the parking, to keep the police department's presence in downtown Missoula. That's another reason why the Missoula downtown is so successful, is that we have these county and city governments and, you know, agencies like the police department in our downtown. The last project that's come to our attention just in December was the Performing Arts Center. Again, an incredibly exciting concept for Missoula's downtown. They want us to participate in the parking for that. Would you believe that the parking for that project is $8 million? So it's going to take a lot of $2 parking tickets to help out with that project. Those are the projects that are facing the Parking Commission Board right now. All of them would be tremendous assets to the downtown, and all of them would provide new parking inventory. Now let me talk about some programs. What we'd like to do is also beef up some of our transportation demand management programs, additional mountain line service, more park-and-ride opportunities, more alternative options for the employees to have available, so that they would have a menu, if you will, of choices to pick from. We could also turn that money to marketing, to advertising, to education about our parking program. So there's lots of opportunities where we would utilize that additional revenue.
These issues are very complex, and people tend to, I think, reduce them to their simplest terms. What can MPC do to help educate the public about the proposal, about the fine increase, and keep it positive?
Actually, I have a dream. And that dream would be a dream of cooperative marketing, a campaign to promote all of downtown with the Downtown Association, the newly-formed Business Improvement District, and the parking commission. And together, we could promote a united image of the downtown to all the community and beyond about what Missoula's downtown is all about. About four years ago, we did a $50,000 campaign that dealt only with parking, and that money went just like that. Fortunately, the result of it was, we were able to increase awareness of getting people to park in our off-street structures. You know, we did enough circling the block already, free up your wiper blades, park in the structures. And we do. We've got about 65% utilization of our parking, off-street parking facilities, which is good. There's more available. But what I'd like to see is, rather than do a campaign about parking, I think that we need to look at the fact that we are all in this together. The newly-formed BID is off with an exciting start with some of the programs that they have initiated. The Downtown Association, I think, is just, again, it's still exploding and doing extremely well. Put the three of us together, pool our resources, and I think we could just do a dynamite marketing campaign that would just be totally positive in all ways. That's my dream.
Could you summarize what you've said, and what are the goals of the fines structure?
Okay, simple. Three things. With the new proposal-fine structure, it will encourage compliance and plugging the parking meters. Thus, it will create greater availability and turnover of the parking spaces, and it will then increase the parking commission's financial capacity to build additional parking inventory for the downtown. Simple as that.
Okay, I've gotten to the, just to the very end of my list of questions, and after this next question, we'll be taking questions from the audience. And again, I want to remind you, so that we get a record of your question, and everybody in the audience can hear it, I'm going to ask you to come up to this table, and we'll just turn the microphone on. I think we can probably leave that one on, and speak clearly into the microphone and address the parking commission. The last question on the list that was provided, because I'm sure everyone is interested in this one, what is the process that's going to be followed from this point on to adopt this fines increased proposal?
First of all, the key word is "process," and I truly believe that the parking commission has honored "process" in proposing our fines structure. The Parking Commission Board of Directors, as Tom noted earlier, has been aware of this concept and idea and issue for a very, very long time. We have discussed it at several board meetings. All of our board meetings are open to the public. You are all welcome to come to them. Our agendas are posted on the website. So we've allowed people to be aware of the fact that we are discussing the fines. We've discussed them in the last three monthly meetings, and the last monthly meeting, the board voted unanimously to carry this proposal forward and to allow the public process to occur. The first step was to get the Downtown Association's input. So we've taken a proposal that the board unanimously agreed upon, and we took it to the Downtown Association Board of Directors. I made a presentation at the board meeting. From there, they referred it back to the Executive Committee for Advisory. I made a presentation at the Executive Committee. At that point, the Executive Committee of the Downtown Association Board of Directors voted to support our request to get their support of the proposal. At that point, they determined that they needed to get more information and get more input from the Downtown Association members. It then went back to the full board meeting. At that board meeting, both sides of the issue... At that board meeting, both sides of the issues were presented equally. There was lots of opportunity for conversation, for questions and answers. Again, it was referred back to the Executive Committee. Executive Committee, I believe, discussed it more thoroughly. They decided what they needed to do was bring this to the full board and present a question and answer opportunity for all the board members and any MDA member to come down and listen to the question-and-answer session. That happened. Those were where these questions came from. So those were, again, devised by the Downtown Association, and then I answered those very much in the same format as tonight. Tonight, we're holding this public meeting, which I know has gotten a great deal of exposure from all the media to welcome people to come down and participate and ask questions. It's my understanding that the Executive Committee is still holding the recommendation to accept the support and take it to the full Board of Directors of the Downtown Association. When that will happen, I don't know. Their next board meeting is Tuesday, April 3rd. Whether they want to continue to gather input from their members, that is their choice. The Parking Commission Board will be patient. It's important to us that we have everybody, everybody's opinion heard and voice to the Downtown Association, so when their Board of Directors votes, they will be representing their membership. That's incredibly important, too. I know the Downtown Association. It's also very important to us. The next step beyond that is to take our proposal to the City Council. Ultimately, it's the City Council that will make this decision. To help you understand, the Parking Commission is an entity in and of itself, and we have authority to do almost anything administratively. There are only two things that we cannot do on our own. That is to set our on-street fines and to set our own jurisdiction. The council has the authority to do that for us. My understanding of that is that they wanted to keep control of the public on-street activity and what happens there, because that is public domain. So this will then go through the City Council process. First, it will go to the administrative, Administration and Finance Committee meeting. I will shepherd this through that process. I will make a presentation. They will have the opportunity to have all kinds of input from everybody. It will then get referred to City Council. The City Council will then set a public hearing. That public hearing will have public notice. Everybody is welcome to come to that, pros and cons, whatever. They can come and voice their opinion in front of the council. It will then go back to the council for a vote. So we're kind of about mile two of the marathon, and we've got a long way to go with lots of opportunity for a lot of input. So that's the process.
Thank you, Ann, and thank you, members of the commission. What I would like to do, and just kind of a traffic control request, is that if you have questions, to maybe line up in the two aisles, and then what I'll do is I'll just alternate. I don't know if there's a lot of questions. There may be only a few, but if there are a lot of questions, in order to get everybody to have a turn to ask their question, if you'll line up, and that'll indicate that you want to ask a question, and then we'll just alternate back and forth on the aisles. So...
Do you have any questions during cases?
This meeting is questions. That's what this is, this meeting is for questions. Okay. So if you have a question, come up here and... Feel free to ask it right here. Any questions?
I'm Erwin Burns. Been a member of our community for a long time. I get a feeling in listening to what you've been telling us this evening that there are certain people in our community that are abusing the parking privileges downtown, and you want the average Joe that gets five parking tickets in 40-some years, and you want to gouge him. And I think that part of the problem is, is you don't know how to handle the people that abuse the parking. And it would appear to me that if you have people that continually abuse it, then they are the ones that should pay the penalty, and not the person that, you know, gets an incidental parking ticket occasionally.
Can you give a good question there?
Pardon? Well, my question is, do we have a problem with people that thoroughly abuse the parking? And what are you doing to address that?
Okay. We do have a problem with people who continually abuse the parking, and we give them tickets, and we give them lots of the tickets, but the tickets are so low that it doesn't act as a deterrent. And so consequently, they think it's easier, more convenient, cheaper to simply sit on the street. We can't issue enough tickets to be a deterrent. So what they need to do is be more of a disincentive. Unfortunately, it's hard to determine who those abusers are at any given point to who's the occasional customer. The customer doesn't need to worry about getting a ticket if they simply plug the meter. In fact, I was speaking to a gentleman back east in a town very similar to Missoula, and I said, "By the way, what are your parking meter violations?" And he said, "I don't know. I plug the meter." Now, bingo. You don't need to worry whether it's $2, $5, or $10, as long as you plug the meter. If there's an occasional customer that gets a ticket, they'll remember next time that they need to plug the meter.
Erwin? John? John Smith. You and I know each other.
Yeah.
Long time, huh?
Long time.
$5 is the amount we came to. I guess it could be seen maybe as an arbitrary number, but, you know, we looked at these other cities and whatnot. I got a lot of input from business owners saying, "Look, if you've got abusers out there, people that are truly abusing it, I don't think $5 is enough. I think it should be 10 or 15 or 20." And I think our feeling, or at least my feeling when I voted for the $5, was kind of a compromise between what that person was saying, which actually does make sense. If you really want a true disincentive, you would make it 20 bucks. But I'm like you. I get a parking ticket now and then when I don't have a quarter in my pocket, and I think I'm just going to run in real quick, and along comes Cindy, and I get a ticket, right? So $5 was kind of a compromise. I hope $5 is enough of a disincentive to prevent the abuse or slow the abuse or curtail the abuse enough that we can open up more parking. The whole idea here is to keep the parking open for customers in downtown Missoula.
I understand. Let me ask one other question. People that accumulate fines, can you give me an answer that maybe an extraordinary case, how many tickets a person might owe?
Okay. We have an ordinance that says anybody with 10 outstanding violations may be eligible to be booted, and that's putting the wheel lock on the car. We've got a very sophisticated parking management program that keeps track of that for us. When an officer comes to a vehicle, license plate, and they have 10 outstanding tickets on it, red flag will come up, and if it's, if it's accurate, they check with the office. If that person hasn't just come in and paid, then we send out our maintenance crew, and they boot that car. That adds another $25 to their already accumulated tickets. Now, right now, they could have 10 $2 tickets. That's only $20 outstanding, but our reasoning is, if you have 10 tickets, you're an abuser. You shouldn't have 10 outstanding tickets. But like I said before, there are people that have 10, 15, 20 outstanding tickets, and they simply get a monthly bill, which is our parking notice, and they use it like a utility bill, and they just write out their check and send it in like it's a cost of parking to do business.
Well, and raise the parking fee on those individuals that abuse it. I mean, the average person in Missoula doesn't abuse parking. It appears to me that there's a select group of people that abuse it, and those are the people that should pay through the nose. Thank you.
I, my name's Jenny, and I actually just came to listen tonight, but I park in the downtown. I work in the downtown. And I'm not yet convinced that increasing the fines will free up more parking spaces, particularly for employees, because I think you'll see, what do you call it, leapfrogging or the...
Hippopping, rock and roll.
So I guess I'm not convinced of that yet. And one of my thoughts was just what the gentleman before me had said. If the problem is people that are not plugging the meters, that rather than, it sounds like you boot them if there are outstanding tickets, which I think you mean tickets that aren't paid.
Right.
It seems like that is an idea to approach it, if, whether they've paid it or not, if they continue to accrue multiple tickets rather than punishing the people who get the occasional ticket. That seems like a good approach, but I guess my question is, have you thought of other things? If we're going to compare the meters rates and the overtime rates to big cities, which I have in my life spent quite a bit of time in, I guess one of the things that I find frustrating is that we don't stripe our streets or our parking areas the way big cities do to maximize those precious spaces, as you've referred to them as. Has that, is that something that the parking, I don't know if the Parking Commission does that, or if that's Public Works, but has that been considered?
Yes. I've worked very closely with traffic services. We've evaluated every block face. As I said, we have particularly wide streets, so we have put angle parking in absolutely every place that we can put angle parking, because that's high-density parking. We've also looked at yellow zones where, well, the yellow zones are safety. They're for visibility. We don't want to jeopardize that, but at the same time, if the yellow zone doesn't have to be quite that long, can we get another metered space in there? We have looked at all kinds of opportunities like that to maximize that on-street parking. When you refer to these other cities as big cities, these are cities that are the same size as Missoula.
Park City? Oh, I'm sorry. Park City, Bellingham, Boise, those? Okay.
Yeah. Those are similar to Missoula.
Okay.
And Jenny, I know you asked a few other questions in there, and I'm forgetting them.
Well, in terms of the striping, I'm not just talking about getting another angle space, let's say, but when you come, you come to downtown and someone has parked in such a way that you could have gotten a space in front of them and behind them, it seems like if you put the parallel, the little white stripes that tells people where to park so that at least that person's not taking up three spaces.
We do that. And, you know, of course, our meters help to find that.
Not just at meters, though.
What?
I'm talking, not just at metered spaces. And also in the angles, the parking lots where there are angle spaces, those seem extraordinarily large, and you could get another space out of it. Or you could revise the size of a standard parking space so that those people who are driving smaller cars could take advantage of, let's say, smaller space, compact-sized spaces, that type of an approach. And I guess let me ask one last question, or thing for you to consider, is that if, it sounds like the problem is people who aren't plugging meters at all, and that, to me, is a problem, but I also think that there's, I think there should also be a grace period after the two hours in the meter that for the person who, you know, is rushing out there, and this has been me many, well, not many times, but probably 10 times in my working career here, I'll get out there right as I'm getting a ticket in that five minutes. And it would be nice for you to consider doing a grace period at the meters and the overtime spaces that I think might go a long way in kind of mitigating this frustration that people are feeling. Have you thought of that as well?
Can I ask you, how would you administer that? If the meter maid shows up and you run out and you've been over for 45 minutes, and you say, "Oh, just five minutes. It just popped up five minutes ago."
No, it seems like in the cities that I've, meters that I've seen have a red, before it goes to red, after two hours, it comes up yellow.
Oh, okay.
And that's a five, 10-minute grace period. I don't know what it would mean retrofitting the meters, but it's just some thoughts.
Totally different meter.
Is it? I don't know.
Regarding the size of parking spaces and utilizing, it's extremely difficult in Missoula, because we have the double-wide cabs, extra-long, we've got, you know, the smaller little, you know, Mini Coopers. We've got to accommodate them all. We have to say that there's an average width. We've got a regulation that governs how long that parking space has to be and how wide it is. That's not our choice. We work with Public Works for that. Again, we're constantly looking at how we maximize that precious public right-of-way. Now, where we don't have meters, they don't stripe those. I mean, for the traffic services to stripe all the parking spaces is a huge effort, and they have a difficult time getting around every year to do that. We've got marks that aren't well-maintained, which is difficult. With our meters, we put arrows to show where they need to park, you know, and if they park between two spaces and take up two spaces, they get an improper parking ticket, and that gets their attention real quickly. Cindy, do you have anything to add to help with this?
No, that's okay.
Thank you for the information. Appreciate it.
My name's Cheryl. I'm the manager of Studio Pandora Downtown, and I'm really glad to be here, and I appreciate all the information that has been given, as well as the opportunity to be here and share and question. One of the concerns that I have that seems a little bit overwhelming is that there's a big difference between your experience with parking versus my experience as a retailer and other small businesses that try and have successful, healthy businesses downtown. And the gap just seems really big. Often, I just want to share this really quick, and then I've got a couple of questions. Oftentimes, when we get folks visiting from out of town, they actually think the parking meters are just for aesthetic purposes, and we have to remind them that, no, they need to feed them, that this is actually a town that has parking meters. And we have quarters on hand that we try to encourage customers to use and remind them that they, that they need to plug their meter, and also hoping that they'll shop at our store and take a little bit more time to do that. I just want to read really quick an email that I, that I sent on to the MDA. Regarding these concerns, we're trying to encourage people in Missoula to come downtown and shop, and we're worried about how this will affect our customers specifically. We already have customers that complain about the parking, and more often than not, are rushing to leave our store because they're worried about getting a ticket. They often tell us that they only come downtown when they have to, not for enjoyment, for relaxing, or for shopping. We do our best to explain our position and the downtown parking position and the situation, and are always offering them coins and trying to encourage them to stay and shop at our store. We believe that if the parking tickets are raised, this initial ticket, our business, as well as other businesses like ours downtown, will be hurt by it and affected. We believe this will further discourage our customers from coming to shop downtown, especially after they receive a high-priced ticket. Our goal is to someday see that customers are able to come and park and feel free to go store-to-store and shop and browse without having to rush. More people would feel more comfortable with coming here to shop and see all the great shops downtown and all that we, as downtown, have to offer in Missoula. We believe that there are other alternatives to discourage people from parking in the same spot for over two hours or abusive parkers, and would like to see some other situations for this problem. What I see is that there's, there's just a couple of different issues. One is what you, we've made very clear tonight, which are the abusers, and then our customers, or who I see are customers, and their situations. And I, there is, there is. So I guess I would like to know if there's any way to bridge that huge gap that I'm, that I'm feeling. And I guess another concern of mine is that the small businesses downtown that I've chatted with, and there's been so many, that it just seems like this is an overwhelming, really, it's just a really big concern on my part and as well as other small businesses. And I guess I'm concerned to see that that hasn't been addressed or to see any middle ground, so I would like to see that. As well as one of the... As well as, one of the, one of the things I would also like to question is, is that if, if the abusers are mostly businesses, or store owners or employees, that really maybe the city or the Parking Commission can deal specifically with those people, rather than the customers who are coming to visit downtown. Thanks for letting me share.
Okay. You know, you at your store are in a unique position, because you have the opportunity to utilize Central Park, the parking structure. So part of this is all about education, and we all need to collectively work on educating the public. You, as, you know, store owner there, educate them about the validation program. You can give them free coupons to park in Central Park around the corner for 25 cents an hour. That's really inexpensive parking. The Parking Commission welcomes people to come down. For 25 cents an hour, that's cheaper than dirt. And you've got the opportunity to utilize that validation program, and when you have customers come in and they're anxious about parking, hand them a validation coupon and say, "Park for free." And then you are the one that gets charged for that free parking. If you see them rushing to go back out to their meter, maybe educate them and say, "Gosh, can you plug a dollars, I mean, an hour's worth, rather than a half hour," and anticipate being in here a little bit longer. And so they think ahead of time before that, so they, they aren't anxious about sitting at the meter and maybe getting a ticket. A lot of this is educating, educating the public about coming down, and if they come down to plug the meter or park in one of our off-street facilities, that are really very user-friendly. I'm trying to see what else you brought up. I think that's...
I was just pushing the gap between the small businesses...
Oh, there you go.
One point I'd like to make, as far as we can tell, this, the $2 fine was set in 1972. Before that, it was a dollar, so sometime in the very early 70s, they doubled the fine, which was a big increase. In 1972, you could buy a gallon of gasoline for 35 cents. I just filled my tank up and paid $2.54. And that's a lot of money. So in '71, the price, the fine was basically six times the gallon, six times the cost of a gallon of gasoline, and now it's, it's not even a gallon. So I don't think that our increase is that horrific for consumers. And again, if they put the 50 cents in the meter, they get a dollars, an hour's worth of, of parking, which is very cheap parking. Jeff?
Again, we're trying to get to questions, and I appreciate the comments, but let's try to...
I have two questions. My first one has to do with questions, and I guess it seems a disingenuous way to prevent people from saying what they want to say, to limit us to questions. So I'm asking, I guess, why that format was taken? If anybody cares to answer that question.
The Commission's already stated its opinion, and there will be another public hearing where you can state your opinion in front of the city council. What we're trying to do here is educate the public, yourself, as to why we made the decision that we made.
Without public input.
We've had public input.
When did you take comment? Questions, you have to, what are you going to take comment, not questions? Is there a process?
There's a public, there is a public process.
Can you wait your turn? Well, I want to, I want to be able to keep this orderly and let the Commission...
Ladies' question, maybe the Commission can take comment.
Thank you, Dick. That's exactly what he's doing.
I'll answer the question. We took comment, we have public meetings every month, and several business owners came and commented, and they were adverse. And then we took comment by email over the last two months, and then we voted. So we did take public comment, Dick. We took a lot of public comment.
I have heard that this is public...
Dick!
And I didn't either, sir.
Dick, you come, you come to meetings all the time. You could have come, the, every meeting...
You emailed me and said this was on your agenda.
Every monthly meeting is a public meeting.
Well, I, I think if there's something that has this kind of impact on the downtown businesses, don't you feel that it would be appropriate to let us know, so that we could have input into it?
Well, we do. I don't see how we don't. I don't see how we don't.
No, I did not know, and I follow...
How did the business owners that came to our meeting get there?
You just stated you're not...
Bring up the MDA, it's a February issue.
It is, at this point. We're here to answer questions.
Decision without input.
Well, that's not true.
By the city council.
Well, I wish you'd quit, I wish you'd quit misstating what's occurred, which is what you're doing, Dick.
You just did that.
I didn't say we didn't take comment, we've taken comment.
Can we go back to order, Dick, please? And if you, if you have a question, because this is just going to devolve into something that's not going to be helpful. And if you want to come up and ask a question, then I think you should, and I think that you should get an answer. But I think we need to maintain a little bit of civility and not shouting, and do this in an orderly fashion, so that the questions can be asked and they can be answered. So we're going to ask that this lady please be allowed to ask her question, and if you have a question, please come ask it when it's appropriate. Thank you. So please.
And I'm sorry, I didn't say my name. I'm Jerry Fisher. I own Jerry Fisher Real Estate, and I also own World Games of Montana. Missoula has so much promise as a downtown, and we never quite make it shine like it should. And that's not all the Parking Commission, there's a lot of issues there. But a change is needed, I think, and Missoula's my home, and I want to see it thrive, and I want to see it do well. And you know, you don't do that by being punitive with people. It doesn't work. And for people who are parking for $2 and don't give a rip, $5 is not going to matter. But $5, and the impact it's going to have mentally on the customers who come downtown, is going to have a huge impact on the small businesses. How many small businesses have closed the downtown? They simply can't compete because there's not enough customers to support the rents and keeping a business open. And for anything that is part of our community that wants to improve it and make it better, I have to ask the question as to why it would be something punitive. I'm dismayed that you're even considering this. We have an issue apparently with people who are abusing parking, and I think as the Downtown Association, as the Parking Commission, maybe we need to address that individually with those owners. I would not object to being part of a group to go and talk to them and say, "Get your butt off the street. It's not for this. What it's for is our customers to come downtown." There are wonderful, wonderful businesses downtown, and they need your support if they're going to thrive. They've got to compete against the box stores, they've got to compete against the internet, and you're going to slap them one more time? They don't have to come here. They really don't have to come here. They don't want to pay a fine to shop, they can park for free, they had a lot of good shopping in Missoula. Bozeman does not have parking meters downtown, and they would not even consider putting them downtown. They said, "We want to make our downtown a welcoming place, a friendly place, a place where people will come." After two hours, or three hours, whatever the limit is, why not have a $25 fine? And if you boot a car and you charge them $25, I think that is insane. Why isn't that $100? I think you're going after the wrong people. You're going after the customers, the people we want downtown. You're not going after the people who are abusing it, because I think for the majority of them, $5 is not going to make any difference. I have my own friends who say they love my shop, but they won't come downtown. They come down once a year at Christmas, and they shop, and that's it. I had to move my real estate office, had nothing to do with parking, but I moved to a location out near the mall. The response, and I've not even asked the question, the response from clients, other agents, has been absolutely remarkable, because they say, "Finally, you are someplace where we can park, we're not going to get a ticket, you know, we can do things." You folks are in a position to do something positive for downtown Missoula, and I really wish you would consider it, because so many stores are struggling downtown, and I don't know if you realize it, but as every little store that has some of the charm, and it adds to the soul and the heart of Missoula, as each one closes its doors, as a community, we've lost something. And I wouldn't want to sit on that side of the desk and be a cause of that. I would like to encourage all of these little businesses and see them succeed. My recommendation, and this is something I felt very strongly about for many years, is that we remove the parking meters and go to something similar to what Bozeman has. I do not have figures to back up what I'm saying, but I am well aware, and I'm sure that you are too, if you've investigated, the cities and the Parking Commissions do not lose money, they make money, because the fines are higher, they're after the people that they should be after, and the general public comes down. I, I think you're in a position where you're asked, need to ask yourself, do you want Missoula to be a shopping center downtown, or do you want it all to be on reserve? And only thing, the only thing downtown will be nightlife, which is great. I love to come down at night. But is that all we want down here? Do we want to shut down all these little businesses? Because I think that's a great danger. So my question is, have you ever considered removing the meters and taking a whole new approach and going into the new century and doing something positive for Missoula? That's my question.
I'll answer, or at least start. That's a wonderful question, and I'm glad you asked it, because it really gets at the heart of the matter. How many people here would have no parking meters in downtown Missoula? Okay. And we could abolish the Parking Commission altogether. That'd be fine, it's a volunteer deal, as far as I'm concerned.
You wouldn't have to do that. Why would you abolish? You'd still have two-hour parking, you'd have to, you'd have to ticket those people, you still have parking structures, there's a lot of ways to raise money, a lot of ways to raise money, and it doesn't have to be a $5 ticket.
I own the building where my business exists, on Pine Street, right down the street, 315 West Pine. And when I bought that building and refurbished it and made it a professional office, the rest of the block was going the same way. So that whole block is now professional offices, but before that, it was rentals. It was, people owned them and college students lived there. And so there were no parking meters, there was no controlled parking at all on that block, okay? When I, that was a professional office, and all the buildings were all professional offices, there, there was a bit of a lag before there was controlled parking on that block. There was no parking on my block during the 8:00 to 5:00 workday during the week, for my customers, none, because county employees parked there. I watched them come at 8:00 in the morning, 5:00 to 8:00 in the morning, and I watched them leave at 5:00, okay? So it was completely full. When I got on the Parking Commission, Dick Clemo called me up and said, "There's an opening on the Parking Commission, we could use a guy like you, John." I said, "Whoa, the Parking Commission?" I hate parking meters. And I do hate parking meters. And I got on the Parking Commission, Mike Katus agreed, he was the mayor, said, "Okay," and recommended me to the council, and I was approved. And I have learned so much in six years, and not just from my own experience, but from being on this commission, that if we don't have some kind of control of what, how parking occurs here in downtown Missoula, there will be no parking for small businesses, for customers.
If you have two-hour parking, you have control. You have as much control as you have now, and maybe more.
So is it the, because we're not talking, we, this discussion isn't about 50 cents or a dollar. I think, I would be more excited as a small business owner if we were talking about raising the meter rates, which we did a couple of years ago, than I would about the fines, because then what's the difference? If we have a two-hour, no meters, just two-hour parking, because they did that on my block too, and it didn't work either, but, so we just had two hours, right? No meters, so you can come park in a space for two hours, right? So your customer comes and parks for two hours and then leaves, and they don't have to plug the meter, right?
Correct.
Okay, and if they stay over two hours, they get a ticket?
Correct.
For being a violator?
Correct.
How is that different than what we're saying right now? Because you're not going to get the $5 ticket unless you go over two hours.
Perception...
Or you don't plug the meter, I guess.
Perception becomes reality. That is a friendly approach. Come downtown, you've got two hours to park, we're sorry, it's more money if you get fined. But people can live with that, because they feel like they're getting something, and whenever you want to do, you have to give as well as get, you know? You can't just take, take, take. And that's what I perceive, we're doing a very negative, punitive action here, instead of something positive. Hey, we'll let you park for free for two hours.
Okay.
And maybe it's $15 or $20 after that.
Okay, well...
And I don't think the cities lose any money. The Parking Commissions have as much money, and they still have a board, you wouldn't be out of a job.
Okay, I want to, I want to address that. Wait, I, okay, let's city council, I do want to address the money thing, though, about the Parking Commission and money.
Okay, from my perspective as an officer, every year at Christmas, we advertise two hours of free parking. Come down, go Christmas shopping, have lunch with your family, whatever. We give out little Christmas cards. Do you know who 90% of those people are? Who we give those to? Employees, business owners, leases. They come out from their lease spaces, they come out from Park, Central Park, where they pay to normally park, and they park in front of the businesses on the street. So from my perspective, you know, I'm somebody who likes everything to be free also, but then we have store owners calling us saying, "Hey, when are you going to get to these cars? They've been here half a day." Well, when you're writing out, "Here's two-hour free parking," all day long, it's hard to get back around. And that's honest-to-god truth.
Okay, but if you, if the only, if you, your job was to mark cars for two hours...
We do that.
And then give tickets.
We do that with...
But I under, I understood that the report given to the Parking Commission was that that, the number of tickets there was so insignificant, it was not even included in the report.
Jerry, that was a misstatement about our ticket management program. Our current program does not track the second and third offenses like it used to with the old program. So that's a misrepresentation of that figure. People are getting second and third-time offenses for both meter and overtime, they just aren't being recorded as that, because the current handhelds cannot calculate that. They are getting those tickets, but they're not being recorded that way.
Do we need a better program? Maybe we got the wrong program.
We've got the state-of-the-art program.
I mean, if you can't track these things, because if our problem is the people who are getting multiple tickets and we can't track them, something's...
But they're getting multiple tickets, it's just, the program that we chose, which is an international program that's been extremely successful, no other community does this escalation kind of thing and tracks second and third offenses. It just doesn't happen. So when you buy a full program, we can't customize it to do that. And so we had an independent computer programming specialist consultant evaluate all of our proposals, and together with our information services department, chose that for us. It's been a very, very good fit. It's a good program.
Jerry, I'd like to make two points, too.
Yes.
One, I try to shop downtown as much as possible, for the same reasons you probably do.
I do.
And, and I don't just go to one store. I cruise around. And so I'm downtown for an hour and 45 minutes, and I happen to come into your store, and there's something I'm interested in, and it takes me half an hour before I buy, and I get a, what'd you say, $25 fine?
Whatever, 15 to 20.
Would I be real happy about that? No, I wouldn't. A $5 fine? That's not quite so bad. That's just, I'm just saying, you're, you're talking about hitting people with the head with a sledgehammer.
You're not giving them anything, though. You're, we would be giving them something if we took out the meters.
Two hours free parking, and then a serious penalty, and boy, I, I just think...
$15, I, you know, then I think, I don't find that to be as punitive as what you're looking at.
A shopper spends a little extra time, and you're going to penalize them, and I...
That's what you're doing. That's why we're complaining.
I, I, you know...
Because that's what you're doing.
The second point...
There are better ways to handle this, and we can do better. I know we can do better.
We can. The other point I wanted to make was this. Kalispell took out all their parking meters, the first part of, in the 80s, 1980s. We bought them. Missoula bought the parking...
Hooray for us.
They're putting them back in, because it didn't work. Number two, Bozeman. Bozeman has invited, the Parking Commission at Bozeman has invited Ann to come to Bozeman on two separate occasions, because they are in such a mess. They've asked her to come and look at their system and give them advice on how to solve it.
Yes, and she gave wonderful advice that we wish she would give to us.
But Jerry, I think...
And I think, because they would not change and take the parking meters back in. And Bozeman's very comparable to Missoula in size, you know, we're a little bit bigger. I don't want to see you take the soul out of downtown Missoula.
And we don't want to do that.
I think you're headed in that... I think you're headed in that direction is what I'm afraid of. And I think I've used my time, so I'm sure there are other people who want to, here I could stay here.
Jerry, I would like to address a few things that you, you did bring up. First of all, you said, "Why don't we go and talk to those employers and employees and talk to them about the impact that they are having on their block faces and whatnot?" I do it all the time. The officers come and report to me that there is somebody, somebody in this business and they're abusing it. I call them up and I said, "You know, this is not the right thing to do, you're taking away spaces from your neighbors. Forget about caring about them, they obviously don't care. They don't care about their neighbors as well." And I'll let Cindy talk about a conversation she had, and I can show you. I've got the rap sheet of an employer who owns, who owns a business, he allows himself and his employees to park out in front of his place on Main Street, right near the parking commission, the Central Park, and the employer pays for his employees' parking tickets. It's fifteen pages long, he doesn't give a rip. It's cheap parking.
And five dollars is not going to make any difference to many of those people. I really don't think so.
All right. Let me address your, your thing. Why isn't the boot higher? We have to price the boot according to law for the cost of the service that it takes for the parking commission maintenance crew to go and put the boot on and not. We can't arbitrarily say, "We're going to put the boot at a hundred dollars." For twenty-five dollars, we can justify that that's a cost of what it takes for our personnel to go do that.
So it's not a punitive thing at all, then? It's not something to control parking?
It's an added...
I mean, it...
Inconvenience, yeah.
Cindy, did you have any more comment? No. Okay. Rob?
I would like to comment that for the foreseeable future, parking meters are not going to go away because the parking commission of the city have, has bonding capacities currently that those parking meters help to fund. It'll be a long, quite a few years before that happens. And those meters have actually, I think, contributed greatly to the downtown that we have now. I lived here back in nineteen eighty when you could have drove five semis side by side right down Higgins Street and not hit a thing.
That's right.
And I think the parking meters have helped to revitalize the downtown.
I really disagree with that.
They have put in, helped put in the Central Park, Bank Street structure, and, and maintained all the other parking venues that we have.
I really disagree. Missoula redevelopment did a lot for the downtown, and I, I think parking meters have done nothing. I've never known them to be anything except punitive. You said something...
Jerry, let me address Bozeman for a second. I spoke with one of their directors yesterday, and they're building a four-hundred-space parking structure. Huge money. My advice, when I have been there to talk to not only their mayor and council, but to their parking commission, has been, before you build off-street parking, you need to manage your on-street parking. Again, it's your most valuable resource. They don't have meters, they have two-hour parking. Who's parking in that two-hour parking? It's the employees. So I asked this individual, "Who do you think is going to fill up that four-hundred-space parking structure when all the employees are parking on the street?" He agreed. I said, "Who's going to park in the structure? Customers are not. They don't want to park in a structure. The ideal way to structure your parking is to have your least expensive parking in a structure or on your off-street lots. And then you don't have the two-hour limit. That encourages people who understand the parking program and incentive from their pocketbook to park off-street. Then those that want to park on-street will have the ability and the availability to have that. Right now, Bozeman doesn't have that. Now, Bozeman's parking commission was formed in nineteen seventy-one, the very same years ours was. They did a pay-in-lie-of-program. Thirty-six years later, parking commission, the parking commission in Bozeman has no bank account, they have no employees, they have no control on their on-street parking. The parking commission in Missoula has eleven employees, we own two structures, we have thirteen off-street lots, we have eleven hundred meters on the street, and we have substantial resources to build more parking inventory. So if you look at the effectiveness of parking management in thirty-six years between Bozeman and Missoula, I think you would agree that the parking commission in Missoula has been better managed and run than the Bozeman parking commission.
As a business, I would say, yes, that's true, you have. As a business owner, I do not think that we, as the governing bodies, should be taking measures that make it difficult for small businesses to thrive. I, I really do think you are making a huge mistake here, and it's going to have an effect on downtown.
Jerry, I want to thank you for that.
Yeah, I think it's...
We have, we're, we're running out of time, we're burning daylight, and we have a lot of people, I think, who want to ask questions. So get, if, if you, if you can get right to your questions, that will be helpful. So everyone will get a chance.
Thank you. My name is Jamie Lawrence, I own Last Best Candles downtown on the corner of Ryman and Broadway. I am in a unique position because I actually have a private parking lot. So I am terrified of the idea of you guys raising the prices because my parking lot's going to suddenly become the safe haven, and it's already my white whale. I mean, I spend every day freaking out because I'm chasing people out of my lot that aren't my customers, or Scooterville's, or Patterson Investigation, or Neil Leach's. Four of us share a lot with twelve spots. Now, how many parking spots are we going to have available to our customers when all of the people in the street are going, "Oh, my gosh, I can't park on the street, I'm going to get an even bigger fine"? What do you have for those of us who actually have private parking lots who, I mean, we're already having this, this issue of having to try and find parking spots? Honestly, if I had a spot down, or if I had a business downtown without a parking lot, I would be much happier. What, what, I mean, what do you have to offer a business like myself who needs help patrolling it? I mean, I would love to have Cindy come in and start giving tickets to people that are...
We can do that.
I know, I, I've asked you to, actually. I've, I've run into streets and said, "Can you park, please hit this car"? It's just, for me, it's a giant pain, and I'm even more afraid of having this incursion on my lot with an increased fine, additionally with the, the issue that all the other businesses here with the idea of downtown losing support.
But one of the results of controlling better our on-street parking will be a greater availability. So people who are coming down and their customers will have more availability because those county employees that are dominating those block faces right across from you aren't going to be there.
My, my concern is, I, I have, when I look out my window, I see parking spots everywhere. People are parking in my lot and going to neighboring businesses that do not own my parking lot when there are spots on the street. There are spots on the street, people are parking in that lot even after hours when people aren't getting tickets. I mean, my parking lot is a giant disaster every morning because beer bottles are being thrown out. I mean, it's, it's, the Downtown Association is wonderful because they go out every Monday morning and sweep up beer bottles. So, I mean, it's not a lack of parking spots. I see parking spots out there all the time, people come up to me, "Where am I supposed to park"? I'm like, "How about right there? I'll give you quarters." So, I mean, what, what are you going to offer to the businesses that do have parking for their customers and are just going to have lots of people that aren't parking and visiting their businesses? Are, are you going to have something for us to, to manage and control?
Well, I guess as a person who owns their own parking lot, you have every right to put up...
Oh, I do.
Signs and tow...
I, I took cars constantly, I've become the, the parking Nazi of Missoula. I think probably more people hate me than the meter maids, because my fines are a lot bigger because they have to pay ninety dollars to get their truck from Reds.
People don't hate our meter maids.
Actually, they're all so sweet, I mean, you can't get mad at them, they're all so nice. But, I mean, what, what I really want to know, for the four businesses that own our lot, and it is a giant pain for us...
Okay.
What are we supposed to do about all the, the parking that, that we have that we're not able to utilize because people refuse to park on the street because they're afraid of plugging the meter or getting a fine?
And the fine's only two dollars?
Exactly. So, but, but see, that is working in my favor at the moment, because people say, "Well, it's only two dollars." So my, my question is, what are you going to offer those of us that do have parking lots? I mean, are, are you going to allow us to put, put meters in our lot? Or are you going to have Cindy come and patrol my lot? Because I would be delighted for that to happen.
As a private lot, we don't have jurisdiction, so it's your responsibility to manage your lot in a way that best suits your needs. So you have the ability to tow, you have the ability to do all kinds of things to ensure that people that you don't want there parking...
I think it was a sneeze.
So you have control of that. It's like Boom Karborgin had in the, you know, Circle Square Building, they control their parking lot. We don't. They have the same pressures on the on-street as you're experiencing around yours. They control their parking lot. It's a problem, there's no question about it, but we don't have jurisdiction there, so we can't ticket.
But what I'm saying is, your public action here is going to adversely affect my private property, and we are...
And see, I don't believe that.
Oh, boy, like, please come and sit, I've got two chairs in my shop, you can sit in one of them and experience what I experienced during my day.
Okay.
And see how many little, very polite notes I taped to people's windows saying, "This is a private parking lot, please only park here if you're visiting one of these four businesses." And if every one of those was a fine, I mean, gosh, I wouldn't be going also out of business.
What? Yeah. Yeah. I guess rather than a, a nice note saying, "Please don't park here," you get a tow truck and tow them out.
I have been, trust me. Reds loves me. Every time they, they hear my voice, they go ka-ching because they know they're getting another ninety dollars. But they can only get there so quickly.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have a special plug, I'm sorry.
All right, the next person with a question, and again, let's try to stick with the questions and, and so everybody will get a chance.
Hi, I'll be quick. I'm Dan, I've worked downtown twenty years, fourteen years on Front Street. Ann and Cindy know me, I'm quite a parking watcher, and I, I have five quick questions that needn't be answered in detail today. They can be a little bit rhetorical for the sense of time. I'm in agreement with Jerry, I think this is punitive. I, I disagree with the characterization of downtown employers and employees as habitual observer, abusers. No matter what percentage you present me, I think it's, it seems rather cynical tonight that that's the problem and the solution is five dollars. To that end, my questions are this. There has been no mention of the shopper in this, the, my client from Salmon, Idaho, or Whitefish, who comes out and fines their five-dollar, "Thank you for being ten minutes late to the meter, this is going to affect their decision." There's hardly a product in downtown that cannot be found either at the mall or on Reserve. And my question is this, in your comparables of cities, is there any city the size of Missoula that shares both a climate-controlled mall with free parking and a renaissance like Reserve Street? Does any, does any group of small retailers face that double whammy? I think that's important for you to address. Number three, or number four, actually, there's been no addressing of the abuser, and I don't say this pejoratively, I have great sympathy with the downtown residential population. We continue to invite people to live downtown, and yet I do not see the commission addressing the five students who live above my shop. I hate to see them booted. I welcome them down, they support the coffee shop on the corner of my lot, and, and they're great neighbors. I think this will, this will punish those who are financially at risk, and again, five dollars, I agree with Jerry, will not scare away the person who has the deep pocketbook. This will be a burden on the poor and the out-of-town shopper. And then my last question is this, do you see a, a future on the board where you have a greater representation of true product inventory-based retail that faces that monthly overhead? And the one client who chooses not to get that five-dollar ticket because they're a good money manager, that's a big deal to us.
Okay. I can address your last question.
Okay.
It's not our choice who comes on board the Board of Directors for the Parking Commission. A public notice is put out, people can apply for it, the mayor takes the applications, he interviews all of them, he makes a recommendation, that recommendation goes to the city council, and the city council then approves or recommends that recommendation. It is not our choice, it is an independent choice done by the, the mayor and the council.
Do you seek that diversity, however? Do you actively promote that diversity among your board?
It's not our place to actively promote that, it's the place for those people who represent that type of retailer that you are talking about to be aware, watch the paper when they, there is a position available, to apply for the position, and then go through that interview and, and have a desire to be on the board.
Is the, is the ad in the, in the want ads, or where does that appear?
It's in public notices.
Okay.
And, you know, so, and I welcome that. It would obviously be a big conflict of interest if we then went out and campaigned our own members.
Do calls not go out above members saying, "Hey, John, you'd be good on the board"? Has that not been done at a conversational wine tasting level?
I don't know. I personally don't participate in that. People who want to become on this Board of Directors hear about it, read it in the paper, and then they apply for it on their own...
So all these folks found you through the city ads?
I told you, I, I was found. I didn't know, I had, didn't have a clue any more than you do. I was asked by a downtown business owner to apply, and I did. And I got the...
I've been downtown for...
Cut the job, I suppose.
In, in my business for over twenty years. I've been a member of the Downtown Association, I've been on the board, I've been a president of the MDA. Four or five, whatever, however many years ago that I came on the board, applied to come on to the board, there was...
How did you hear of, please?
Pardon?
How did you hear of the position, please?
Individuals from the Downtown Association put the word out that they, that volunteers were needed. This is a volunteer...
Sure.
...situation. And I felt that being a downtown advocate, it was something that was, was of interest to me.
Do you feel...
I don't...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I don't, I'm not involved in retail per se, I have managed a building that rented, had many tenants who were retailers. I have a lot of friends who are retailers. Downtown is my home. Please, don't misunderstand that we're sitting up here and we're not a part of this community. We are.
Do you sense, though, tonight, that perhaps your thumb has not been on the pulse of the inventory-based stop-and-go shopper?
I think, quite honestly, I think that several individuals have misunderstood and don't fully appreciate what is coming in the future for downtown and what is really something that we're trying to do as a several-pronged attack. So much has been said about the abusers, that's not really, that's part of it, that's a large part of it. There's also just moving the spaces so that they're available, and that the perception when somebody drives down Higgins Avenue that there's parking available. The other part of it is a revenue stream and, and the fact that this fine has not increased, at least since nineteen seventy-one. Two dollars then bought an awful lot more, it was perceived then as a fine, and it isn't. And now several people have said, "It's a slap on the hand." And it is.
However, Tom mentioned gas prices, and that rose to me, I think statistically we've seen neither a decrease in cigarette smoking, driving, nor drinking, with the huge escalation of fees, those who can pay will, and, and pity, pity the addicted poor person and their cigarette price.
Then don't get the overtime, plug the meter.
Sure.
It's very affordable.
Let, let, let...
I'm going to quit.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the passion and I appreciate the interest in engaging in the dialogue, and, and I, I'm concerned that we aren't going to be able to get to the end of this line. So I invite the next person to come up and ask a question, and we'll try to get to it, everyone in the line, so everyone gets a turn in fairness. Thank you.[1759.76] Thank you.
Hi. I'm Scott Lacy from Butterfly Herbs. Hi, Cindy. I used to go, um, I've been a part of downtown for twenty-seven years. Our business will be thirty-five years old. When I first worked there, Cindy worked at Butterfly Herbs. And I want to commend all the parking officers, because I think that they are the ambassadors of downtown. We do have downtown ambassadors through the MDA, but actually, our parking officers are the ones who are out there interacting with lots of people every day and doing a great job. So I'm a horrible public speaker, so you're gonna have to excuse me on my nervousness with this, but my viewpoint of this, I got involved with the Parking Commission in ninety-eight, when they were gonna raise the rate to five dollars then. And I think it's, has real damaging potential for small businesses. Our business is fortunate enough to stand on its own, but I have seen so many small businesses downtown come and go and come and go, you know? They make it three years, they spend their advertising budget, and they're gone. There are a few downtown that have been there a long time. This is going to hurt. I think enforcement is the issue. And in ninety-eight, when we convinced the Parking Commission to not adopt the five-dollar meter violation and keep it at two, it was emphasized that enforcement was important, that we needed more, at least one additional officer out there every day. I can witness, just Monday, Stephen and Debbie and I walked two blocks from Higgins to Sawadee, block and a half, actually, for lunch. And we counted the expired meters in that distance, and there were eight expired meters. This was like probably one-thirty in the afternoon. Eight expired meters, cars sitting at them. Why don't they have tickets? None of them had tickets on their car. The other issue that I see with enforcement is having adequate software to regulate the people who are abusers. And it seems as though the equipment that you're using can no longer track the cars adequately that are the abusers. I watch business owners right across the street from my business that I know have leased parking, and they park on the meters, and they don't pay. And, um, the, excuse me, I'm getting off track, but it seems as though software that could adequately keep track of licenses, if an abuser gets a two-dollar ticket and then they do the rock and roll, and those cliches of what people do, and I know that they do them, of the rock and roll and all of that, they were happening in ninety-eight when we discussed this before. And it seems, though, there is somebody who can create software that can keep track of a vehicle. We could have a different fine structure so that if somebody gets a parking ticket for a meter violation, and it's a two-dollar ticket, the next one down the road is gonna be big. And that would change the way we're fining those people, so that their next ticket is a ten-dollar ticket if it's in the same day. And, you know, something like that to deal with the abusers, to get them off the street, that, to me, seems to be the real issue here. And it's not penalizing shoppers that may overstay by a little bit and have to pay a higher fine.
In the words of Alex Trebek, can you put that in the form of a question?
In a question. Why haven't we had an additional parking enforcer, and why aren't more people getting more tickets? It seems like we're laughing at the fact that these abusers are just getting two dollars a day tickets. Why? Why aren't they getting more? Why isn't there more enforcement to handle that?
When we did this in nineteen ninety-eight, there was a recommendation that we hire additional officers. It was the Parking Commission's feeling that we needed to put into play the new enforcement, the new fine structure, and see what happens. We saw that we were able to make a big impact on the overtime abuser. It was successful for that.
Mm-hmm.
That was effective. We didn't need to add an additional officer, because things were going very effectively. A year ago, when we implemented this new ticket-management program, right now, there are no programs that I know of that have the ability or the capacity to do this escalating thing. We had previously a custom-designed program for the Parking Commission by a company in Helena. When that occurred, we paid a bundle of money, and they customized it.
Mm-hmm.
There is no independent software company that would take on doing an entire ticket-management program on their own. These programs are incredibly sophisticated, very, very complicated. We went and did a request for proposal that included having a company design a package for us. That was one of the six proposals. The proposals were so complicated, I hired an independent computer consulting analysis company out of Helena to evaluate all the proposals and put them together so we could compare apples to apples, because they were so complex. This independent company did it for both the Parking Commission in Missoula and in Helena, and now, I think Kalispell, is on board with them. We got Cardinal Ticket Tracking System. It's a very good system. It is used all over the world. We can't customize it. They won't allow us. If they did allow us, they would not honor their program, because every time they did an upgrade, it wouldn't be compatible with our customization. It simply cannot happen. And we paid a lot of money for this program. This program is excellent. It's provided us with very, the other program, we were never able to get reliable reports. I now, for the first time in the thirteen years I've been there, I can tell you how many tickets were written, what fines they were, how much we've collected, what's our collection rate. I've got all those figures now in credible form.
You indicated that as of, like, two years ago, this system cannot deal with second meter violations.
Right.
Because it just can't do that. Yet second meter violations are part of the structure of what the parking enforcers are supposed to do.
Right.
So the equipment is inadequate for what you have been doing for the past two years.
Right. And so what happened was that because the computer couldn't calculate it itself, we've asked the officers to remember.
Mm-hmm.
Now, they write over a hundred tickets a day. To ask them to remember if they ticketed this vehicle at nine oh one in the morning and it's three o'clock in the afternoon, that's too much. I can't, I can't ask them to do that. And besides, if it went to court, we couldn't hold it up in court. And so what we needed to do is have a system, these people are getting second and third violations. We just need to price them so that they are a deterrent.
So if they're getting a third violation, that's a six-dollar fine, correct?
No, no, no.
If, if-
No.
Now, the first fine-
It's-
Cindy, turn on your, okay, somebody's in front of your store. Before nine o'clock, I can buy, before nine, mark all the tires. Okay. I come back at eleven o'clock. Well, first I come by at nine, or nine oh five, because I don't like to ever be right on time. So I'm at, you know, that's not good. Nine oh five, I get a meter violation, didn't put money in the meter. Okay. I marked their tire. I come back, plus I remember them, because they're there every day. I come back at eleven o'clock. They're still there. They get a five-dollar overtime, plus they haven't plugged the meter. So then they get a five-dollar meter violation.
Okay.
Okay, so then, at one o'clock, I come back, still there. So then they get a ten-dollar overtime ticket and a five-dollar meter violation. They can get up to, what is it, forty-seven?
Forty-two.
Forty-two dollars in tickets in one space all day. Now, if it's a thirty-minute meter, I can get them every thirty minutes.
Okay. And-
You know?
That is not the people who are abusing the parking downtown, the employers and employees. That is not the situation that they are falling into, where they're not staying at the same meter, so they don't have that. So if they move to another meter and don't plug, they just get another two-dollar ticket.
That's right.
And they could, if there's enough enforcement, they could get, what, six dollars total?
Exactly.
So six dollars should be able to effectively get them off the street, just as your proposal of five dollars is going to get them off the street. If they're gonna play that rock and roll, if you have enough enforcement out there that you could, you could get them for two dollars at this one, two dollars at that one, and two dollars at another one, that's six dollars. If five dollars is going to do it, is going to take them off the street, six will too. And it seems as though that doesn't penalize the customers, and it doesn't change the reputation of a customer-friendly downtown.
But Scott, okay, the potential is for three two-dollar meter violations in a given day with good enforcement. That's six dollars. Parking in the structure for a day is six dollars and twenty-five cents. If the fine were five, they would have fifteen dollars worth of violations. That would get their attention. They wouldn't do it again. So-
Oh, five each time?
Five each time. They're getting the second and third violations, both in the meter and overtime. What we're simply proposing is what was the second offense from the current program? We're not asking for much difference. So let me give you it in a nutshell.
The current program was user-friendly at the very bottom end. For the customers who were coming downtown, it was a two-dollar ticket, and it hasn't been implemented for a couple of years now. There is no second violation, that five-dollar ticket.
It's just been about a year.
Well, it was two years earlier.
And in this past year is when we've noticed this tremendous increase in that abuse of the two-dollar fine, of the two-dollar violation.
Okay. I thought you had indicated that it was two years ago, but that's okay.
Well, we got the program.
And I want to let somebody else speak. My other thing was that Tom had mentioned what the price of gasoline costs in seventy-one, seventy-two. In seventy-one and seventy-two, there were free parking, Holiday Village was a very popular shopping center, Trumper Shopping Center was, they were free parking. Now we have even more of that. Small businesses downtown have a lot more to, way more competition than we had back then. And it's important that we keep it real friendly for downtown.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
I'm sorry for making you wait.
Can I, I'd like to make a comment before the next question. Just come on up.
I want to be next, John.
I know, you can be next. I just want to say, because I see people leaving, and before people leave, I just want to say that I'm a little distressed by the adversarial nature of this process and the insinuation about this commission. And I just want you to understand, please, from my heart, that I'm on this commission, I'm just trying to think of what's gonna work best for the downtown. I don't have all the answers. Nobody on this commission has all the answers. All we're doing is, we talked about all of the things that you guys have brought up, we weighed those, and we thought this might be the best way. Simplify it and do this, try to change behavior. But you know what? A hundred-dollar fine isn't gonna change behavior by itself, okay? We, as a community, need to pull together and talk and need to start changing the way we go about doing business in this world. We live in a world of malls and box stores. Anybody that knows me knows that that's one of the most abhorrent things in our society today, in my opinion, okay? So I fight for downtown. I talk about downtown. I do everything I can with my children, who I'm rearing, about downtown business districts and how important they are. I don't have all the answers, okay? But please, you don't need to demonize me for voting the way I did. You just don't need to. I'm not the enemy. Trust me, I am not your enemy. I want a vital downtown. I want to make one point about the money. A vital parking commission, I never knew this until I got on here, is incredibly important. First Interstate Bank came to us and said, you know, two things. First thing they said, "We want to stay downtown in our current footprint. We don't have to. We can go out to where everybody else is going, and we can build a big old building and have a big old parking lot." Okay? Second thing they said was, "We want to stay downtown, but we can't do it on this footprint without your help, Parking Commission. If you can't come in with some bonding capacity, significant bonding capacity, and build parking for our employees in this structure, we're not gonna be able to build it. It's just not economically feasible." And I thought to myself, wow. Because when you see the drawings, it's impressive. They are gonna put a business plaza, and do you realize that most of your customers in the downtown, at least as far as I can tell, are me? The professional who works downtown. I eat lunch downtown every day. I go shopping downtown when I'm on my way back from lunch at your stores. And if you have a nine-story building down on the corner of Front and Higgins, do you know how many people and how vital that's gonna look? Do you remember when the Sheraton was built in downtown Billings? Everybody kind of went, "Wow, man, downtown Billings is a really happening place, because they got this big old Sheraton." Right? I mean, if we don't continue to kind of work toward those sorts of things going on in downtown, there will be no retailers in downtown Missoula, because you won't be able to compete with the box stores. You compete with the box stores right now, because I don't want to go to the box stores. I want to shop at your stores. So please, please, you don't need to demonize me to get your way. It's a democratic process. We're making a recommendation to the City Council, but we're not the, we're not gods on this thing. It's, you have representatives on the City Council. Get them to vote it down, if you really, truly. I'm torn. I mean, I've listened to all of you. I got a ton of emails. I got an email from Dick Clemo before I voted. And I was really torn, because I understand the psychology, but I don't think it's about a parking fine. I think it runs much deeper and much broader, and it's up to all of us to try to change that in our community.
Okay. Uh, do you want to know who I am?
Name, and ask your question.
Deanna Richard, The Flower Market. I'm probably one of the babies of the bunch, because I've only had a business downtown for, I think, sixteen years. I have three, three questions, and I'm not sure you can answer them. I'm not sure one of them really warrants an answer. But in the list of cities that you compared us with, Bellingham and those, I wonder what their average income is for household compared to Missoula? Just when you're comparing ticket to ticket, da-da-da-da-da. Then my other question is, it's, one, one quick comment. I put these little handmade signs up in my window, because I can't use the computer. They say no to increased parking fines. The first day they were up, I had five. Five customers, three actually bought something, two people actually only came in to ask me what was going on. I told them. They looked with just this look of total disbelief and said, "Why would they do that to downtown?" Five people had no ties to downtown, other than they shopped. Okay. Now, my other question slash observation, if part of the increase is for increased revenue, for increased bonding, is that not really a tax on downtown and people that come downtown? In order for you to have more money so that you can have a higher bond rate, you have to increase the parking fine from two dollars to five dollars? Sounds like a sales tax to me. Then, I can't remember my other question, so that'll be it. So I don't, I don't know. That's just what it, I mean, my just immediate, when I heard, and then I was told that a bonding, that being able to bond for more, and I remembered my other question. Actually, it's a statement. As far as First Interstate Bank, I think that's a fabulous thing to happen. But I have some issue with a corporation or a company that doesn't even pay one percent on passbook savings needing basically my money to help build their building. Just a thought.
That's a good question. That's a very large question.
I'm one of those poor retailers that, you know, every customer is important to me, and if that, for increased bonding, is part of the issue, I really have an issue with that.
Thank you. Now, we've crossed over nine o'clock. I'm willing to stay, if you're willing to stay a little bit longer.
Let's, uh-
Okay, let's, let's try to get past the comments and get to the-
So, I don't know. Is that bonding like a tax?
Well, I'd like to make-
No. The bonding is not a tax. What's happening-
I mean, I realize what bonding is, but in order to get the bonding, it's like you're taxing us, the parking meters, to raise more money.
I don't think that's the reason that the increase is asked for, but it's gonna be a result of that. But I think it's important to remember that the parking that is created is not specifically for First Interstate Bank. It will be public parking. It will be available to the public as well.
And granted-
It's sort of a little bribe thing of, "I won't build down here unless you do for me."
And that revenue comes from fines, and the fines are accrued by people who violate the system. And- And the fines are accrued by people who violate the system. And we've welcomed them down to very affordable, inexpensive parking. We've provided that. It's their choice not to plug the meters and thus get a fine. It's that revenue that then goes for that. It's not a tax.
Deanna, and First Interstate Bank has never said they won't build down here unless... They said, we'll build a bank that will duplicate what we have now, but it'll be modern. They're gonna go up six floors, but they're gonna sell the floors. Those are customers for your shop.
Like the Millennium Building?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. I misspoke about that. That's right. They said they would build their structure, but it would just be the bank. It'll be a two-story bank.
Okay.
If we want to have the whole, this tower, like the Millennium Building, then they said the only way we can possibly do it is if you help out.
Okay.
And I didn't vote for the, this increase to raise revenue. If that happens, okay, but if nobody, you know, if, no, no. If people, but if people plugged the meter, if people plugged the meter and didn't violate the law...
I think when we really get down to it, it's not a matter of customers plugging the meter. We're trying, or your, or us, or whoever, are trying to come up with a way to get people that abuse it off the street. And sometimes you can't educate consciously.
Right. I agree.
Let's go to the next question, question, and...
I'm Rick Johns, and me and my wife each own businesses downtown. Mine is very small, and hers is on a major corner, and is witness to the parking issues every day. What I would like to do is ask a question that may be part of a solution, instead of a criticism, if I can. Tracking license plates for people that get more than one ticket in a day is not something that you can do that day right now.
That's right.
But if we make these tickets part of municipal court, instead of you guys, when you send out that violation, those, or when you send out the bill, as you call it, if they have three violations in one day, why can't we add a penalty to that? You are taking up time, so why don't we have city council take this as a, not just a parking issue, but a driving violation issue? And if you have three tickets in one day, it's one point on your driving record. But why can't we do that?
Because the difference is between civil offense and a criminal offense. Parking violations are violations against a vehicle. They aren't against an individual. Anybody could drive that vehicle. The person responsible for that vehicle is a registered owner. They ultimately get that notice. But we're not here to ticket individuals. We're here ticketing cars that are improperly parked.
Then can we tow it after the third violation? That would be quite a deterrent. What I'm looking for is a solution to where no one's gonna want to not plug that meter, because if you don't plug the meter, you're going to be, have a serious violation. But in the same venue, not hit the people who come down here to park, and, you know, do things like we used to do with the little tokens. You give them a token when they come in your store, they can go out and put it in the meter.
We no longer can use those tokens, so we've looked at doing other programs, like our validation program, which is very successful and well utilized.
But I guess I don't understand why this, and I know right now you don't have the authority to make it a violation that's gonna be real serious. But, okay, instead of having it be a personal violation for that owner, if someone takes my car and goes out and gets in a wreck, I understand they're responsible for that accident, for the most part. So why don't we just remove the car from the situation? Why don't we just tow the car? It's out of the way, the space is open, the violator is then punished for what they've done, and if you don't want to get towed, you don't do the hop and job, jump and skip, whatever. Take a photograph of it three times, and on the third time, have the fourth photo be reds, towing it away.
Yeah, I tell you, we'd get so much backlash over towing. In fact, that's really the last thing I want to do. All we want to do is have people simply plug the meters. I believe, and the board does as well, that a $5 violation will be a deterrent. I say, let's give it a chance, and let's see what kind of availability and turnover we have. We got good results from the last structure that we put together. There was a loophole in it, and they found that loophole. It's the only part of our whole entire parking program that needs attention. So what we don't have to do is go kill absolutely everything. What if we were to tow somebody that was going into J. Lane's to buy a prom dress? That's not what we want to do.
After they'd been there six hours, they better have decided Kim probably wants him out of the store.
Yeah, that's right. We have the authority to tow anybody who's in violation of a parking ordinance. We have that authority. I choose to rarely, rarely, rarely apply that, just because that is so customer unfriendly. If the customers, the retailers, saw tow trucks running around downtown, towing cars out of parking spaces, I tell you, we'd have more hell to pay than we could handle.
But we're talking about the major violators, the people who do this repeatedly every day.
Logistically, it'd be hard to get a, to tow a vehicle that was parallel parked, with cars on either side of it. The face-in, you probably could get away with it.
How about, how about the business community, you know, taking up the old-fashioned practice of shunning, or some kind of pressure from all of you? I mean, if the violators are employers and their employees, and Missoula County was the worst, you have part-time shunning them, but if it's, if it's business owners, and I don't know why we couldn't publish who we know these violators are, and you guys, you guys take care of it. I mean, really, I don't think, we can't build our way out of the problem. We can't parking commission our way out of this problem. Really, it's a downtown business owners' problem, of which I'm one.
But we can educate our way partially out of it. And that is...
And that's what we're trying to do.
With it in place, and if we actually can partner and put a marketing PR program together, we can help educate the employers, the employees, and the customers, and do it in a positive manner. You know, I have yet to see a situation that someone's brought to me, particularly over this, but even before, that with a little bit of thought, and input maybe from the Parking Commission, almost every parking problem that I've heard of or seen is solvable in a very simple way, in most cases.
And just to be, just to be clear, John isn't suggesting vigilantism.
That's what I hear.
Well, maybe he is. Maybe I shouldn't speak for you.
Well, with good reason.
We're 20 past our quit time, and we're getting the, we're getting the cutoff sign. We have to let people close up the building, because the building has to stay secure, and so we're keeping people after. To reiterate what was said earlier, the process is going to next go through the MDA, and the MDA is gonna make some sort of recommendation, one way or the other. And then the next step will be, the matter will be referred to the city council. There will be, a city council committee will take up with this. You'll have an opportunity to speak to the city council committee on this issue. When the committee is done with its work, the issue will then go before the city council. There will be a public hearing at that time, when you will be able to come down and express your views on this to the city council. Then typically, the item will either be voted on then, or go back to the committee, at which time, at the committee's discretion, you may get yet another time to speak on the issue. So I will encourage you to pay attention. It's noticed in the Missoulian, it'll be on the city's webpage. You'll be able to find out when this item gets referred to the city council. And as good citizens and good, good members of the downtown community, I hope that you will avail yourself of the opportunity to continue the dialogue with the public officials who will make this decision. And I appreciate your civility, and your attention, and your good manners.
Well, I started this off, Jeff, and I just, John, I, I hope, the microphone, because we can't hear you. You can't hear me? Okay. I, I just feel bad, maybe, that you feel the way you do about how we came across this evening. In reading the article in the paper today, it's easy to stay home. That's the easiest thing in the world. I could've gone the Globetrotters and had a, you know, a nice evening. We appreciate what you're doing. We may not appreciate how you're doing it, but we appreciate what you're doing, and it's a thankless job. And I don't want you leaving here thinking that we dislike the Parking Commission, that we dislike you as individuals. We're here to solve a problem, and I think you've heard rather clearly, though, from most of the people that have spoken this evening, that there is a, one particular problem, I think that you're well aware of, that needs some type of addressing that maybe isn't being addressed properly. And that's, I'll leave it at that. Thank you for coming.
And Jeff, if I could make one statement. Again, I appreciate everybody's attention to this. This has been an opportunity to educate you, for you to understand the issues that we have been wrestling with for a long, long time. We do have a great downtown. If you still have questions, please come and see me. I will talk to you, I will set aside hours for you. I will show you where we're getting our facts, I will show you why we're thinking the way we are. So I welcome you to come and continue this discussion with me or with any of the other board members.
Thank you. Good evening.